Excuse me. Needing Foxmore contract. Yes, yes. Our mission. And so. That's okay. So maybe in a way from the victim wanting to come back after. Free thrice for the pregnant females. You know, being divided, it's still alive. It's the states. It's a real long, which should pass. Wow, nation. And they're like, this. First hand of the system. Roll call.
Chargers.
Here.
Or not?
Yeah.
Olson.
Eric.
Stratten here. Incredible as it is.
We didn't say anyone.
Later. Okay. Uh, approval of the agenda. And don't we need to add anything more? There's plenty on there. So. We'll move right to request to appear at Betsy County Emergency Manager Rebecca Hubers. About Betsy County for new management support plan.
So place that you want me to stand will all pick me up.
And pick me up where?
I'll try to make it quick. It sounded like leather. I don't know. Hello, my name is Rebecca Hubers. I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for Betsy County. She means I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city of Frankfort unless they do somebody otherwise but her pronouns mean. For emergencies that come in. And we have a series. You've all seen me, I think before, um, for hazard mitigation plans and things like that. As we work through our. Process, one of our plans that we uh deal with is debris management. The timing seems to be appropriate even though it was on their list of things to do. I'm doing a tour. It should take me about three months to get through all the townships and villages and whatnot and um. But uh, the timing is perfect that you may have all seen on the news, the ice storm damage. And what remains after the storm damage. And in northern Michigan, that's usually the case, other than if we have our straight tornado that would rip off a roof. We mostly have that green debris and what do we do with it? So debris management is pretty much just that. Uh, what do we do with that? Our first goal in um, in response is literally to take care of people and make sure everybody is okay. Our second goal then is recovery. So making sure everybody's okay, just pushing that stuff off to the side of the road. That type of thing. But afterwards, there's all this stuff in the public spaces, the right of ways. And also on private property, but my job tends to not. Focus on private property, some sets, private insurance and so. Things that we focus on now's um, public spaces first to get the community back and running the way it should be as we move forward. So debris management, and I gave Mr. Mills a couple copies and extra copies, and I believe I sent everybody stuff. Lots of bathroom reading material. I only get who care about debris management, which probably for the luck of the city, while you have a DPW department. Can help with that. Um, but. Frankfort doesn't, if there was a risk rate of emergency, Frankfort would have to handle that themselves. The state of emergency from close to the county, which goes to the state and those type of. So my goal today is to just have a discussion. There's no answers required today. Uh, but presenting a little bit of education about debris management is okay. And you're not gonna have to deal with it at all. And that. In our plan that we build to have handy, uh, we like to. Have discussions because the county, even though we're declaring the emergency, shouldn't be telling the city what you're gonna do with your stuff on your streets. Few options for debris management is we could take it all to one spot. You could say village or sorry, city, um. Take all your household debris to one spot. It could be. Again. That's if we were to have things like, if we were to have tornadoes, we could. Car parts and house parts and whatever else is on the side of the road, we'd have to separate those and do all things that um either requires us to do. Sorry. That's a gig. Sorry. Um, so that's a plan that you guys don't have to manage all of your own. That is us. To put that in their head, hey, if something bad were to happen, if the ice storm would have hit us and we would have lost a bunch of trees. What do we do to manage it when it's overwhelming for our staff to be able to be there? You know, the county, ab not, um, and of Northern I dot has come in from Indiana to help. The National Guard has been there to help. So there's other people doing things to help, but what is the plan? We don't make those decisions for you. So um, I, my tour takes about three months because everybody has meetings on the same day, so I always have to push out, you know, another month to visit everybody. Uh, what I'll be doing is sending an email probably to the clerk, to the supervisor, to the mayor. Saying, hey, we had this discussion. Hopefully you guys had time to talk about it or think about it in either a committee or open forum or just you're like, no, we're. Am I like, am I a contractor? You're just gonna talk to the tire chief and the supervisor. We've already agreed as a board. That's it. The board might say, yes, Josh's problem because he's, you know, that type of thing. But anyway, um, is I'm gonna send an email and go to them, hey. You know your community better than I do. Did you think about a place where? People from the city could drop off their items? That's not a thing. We're just like, no, we can't, you know, have a pit or anything like that, that would be okay. Uh. Then our option would be, you know, we're gonna go alongside the road. We're gonna have DPW move it temporarily to a place and, you know, there's all kinds of. Scenarios in your head about how you might be able to manage that. If there is a one location where you're like, yes, Rebecca, we have an address. Um, that doesn't have to be permanent. We may never have a disaster. We're like, oh, yeah, I don't wanna be that. You know, we can't do that, but. We've kind of cut out all the panicked processing ahead of time by knowing that it exists and kind of pre-planned and said, hey, we thought this out. Even though it was ten years.
So it would be beneficial for the city to collaborate. The council and write out a plan of how we would handle.
Um, yeah, well, I do.
And just let you know.
Yeah, I'll send some correspondence and I'll say, hey, did you guys think about, you know, so you may be able to answer for the board. Be like, yeah, we all said we're gonna throw it in the pit. If the city owns back in the corner somewhere. Again, I don't know every community. Community is different. Gold, fast township is completely different than, uh, you know, Benzo, you know, or even the the city. So. Everybody has their own nuance or how they wanna see it done. So. Something about addresses, you know, or locations, GPS coordinates, if it does have an address, is some of those like. Eagle DQ uh likes to know ahead of time where those might be. Not a formal process, not a yes, no process, not a we're gonna get in your business process. It's for safety and like, hey, is it. Clearly not gonna use pure market circles. Too close to waters, too close to homes, too close to wells. They're gonna be like, nah. But if it's somewhere else, they'd be like, yes, that's good. It's viable. Or even in the future, you might be able to use it and you wouldn't have to get permission. Well, even if we had a disaster, we would have to get permission for vehicles to say, we're gonna start throwing these stuff here. So um, we're just kind of. A tax state when all of a sudden there's an inch of ice on every road. That's my job is to try and plan ahead. Make you think about things you rather not think about, uh, because it's.
Just currently just centers.
Yes, so um, you might hear uh some materials management, some uh. They probably are about this much, but yes, all my conversations have to do with emergencies, disasters and.
Well, there's just all kinds of different emergencies such as. Right, California fires, so and so forth, and that's a whole different waste stream and a whole different process because of the. But the storm quite a bit of it's gonna be.
Yeah, it is not storms. If we decide it's gonna be different for drivers and we catch on fire, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely be dealing with that. And we'll say, hey, we have trees that need to go somewhere.
Yeah.
Other debris, home debris, like as you saw in Hawaii or California, yes, completely different. We're gonna get private companies to come in and help us with that, just like there's a big house.
Okay.
So uh, it's the thought process. There's no, even if you made a decision, it doesn't have to be the final decision for ten years from now, you know, it's just one of those. I know I make people think about what they're gonna do it because that's not the normal thought process. We got our everyday items we able to do. And if a, this ice storm or tornado is gonna be hitting the city, all of you live in the city for the most part. We're all gonna be taking care of your own personal business. I don't have problems for three days. What am I gonna do? Then I'm gonna be like, I need you to make a decision right now because the people want answer because they're gonna be like, what do we do? So it helps them start pre-precipitation. Not that anything bad's gonna happen. Do you have any more questions for me? Again, I'll be reaching out the correspondence so you'll be able to personally, uh, like, here's that correspondence. I'll have you either already have the answer. If you don't choose to, but it's nice to be able to see law and address it all lots of.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, just to update on power. Where are we at with that?
Oh, I just talked to a guy from GTE Energy because I thought they had to guess, but they don't. Um. They are a little worried about my May fifteenth deadline because we touch Vanderbilt and. Vanderbilt literally not my tower that I need to touch, but a tower near it is like half all of them. And they just got into there like two days ago. Um, I think it has power now, but it was literally running two weeks without generating power. So everybody is like. Panicking about all the infrastructure on here and I'm just like. Breathing slowly or hoping people are. But we uh, we have commercial power there. Everything's been connected and by, I can send some pictures, but the inside has lots of things in it. Lots of loops of cable. We're very, very close. My delay rate might be the fiber running from here to there if they pull resources away.
Okay, so just to be clear, that's the town by the firehouse.
Yes, sir.
Emergency.
Emergency coordinator.
Sure, sure. It's full of life saving in that.
So, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Sure, right. Moving on to public inputs.
I'd like to say something. Please. Nancy Smith, thirteen sixty Bellows Avenue. Um, so I've been in this community living full-time for six years and my impression. As well as the impression of many other people is that projects go through. With and get pushed through, bulldozed through without much public input until they're in front of people. Um, I missed last meeting because I was traveling, but. One of the things that concerns me is where these bathrooms are going, and this is part of a bigger problem, which is. Projects get um basically kind of bulldozed through and and it affects people and. The people who are not living here full-time are paying the highest taxes. Some of them have the highest property values are underrepresented. And you, if if this continues, you will actually lose a significant amount of interest in this town over time. Uh, putting the bathrooms, try and show me where those bathrooms are going. I was appalled. Like, I would never walk all the way over there from the beach here to use a bathroom. But it's literally going to diminish. These poor people's property values as well as their enjoyment of their property. There's gonna be a different flow of of people walking through that area and they're gonna have to live and look at toilets. Um, this seems to be a consistent theme where you all don't really care about. How things affect people's property values when there's alternatives. There are better alternatives. I think this is a very poor choice for the bathrooms. And this is part of a bigger picture and I think, I think you guys all need an urban planner. I think you need somebody who really literally can look at this town. And build it because there's a lot of opportunity here. And ten years, twenty years from now, if there's not some sort of a bathroom plan, it's not gonna be the talent potential it could be.
Uh, I'm Tom Farrell. I live at eight two eighteen Street. I have two things to say. One, in response to that. This idea that things get bulldozed through here is ridiculous. This bathroom. And its placement has been on this agenda for six or seven years and there have been many, many, many meetings about it. With many, many opportunities for public input. And it's, and the bathroom as proposed, there were diagrams of it, drawings of it, people could go look at. Vote on which one they approved of, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think there's any bulldozes going on. It's just a hot topic. That people have different opinions about and they wanna voice. I think there's a lot of opportunity to voice your opinion in this town and at these meetings. Secondly, the reason I came to this meeting is because I understand that there's a proposal to add. Part-time officer and there's a proposal to add a full-time officer. And I look at the uh, material that. Provided in the packet and I assume that the last two pages in the packet, which are written by chief are addressing that issue. And and providing some sort of justification for the need for either part-time or a full-time officer. And what's enumerated is there are fifty-two calls in a month. And thirty-one of them. Apparently, only thirty-one of the fifty-two are important enough to merit saying what they're about. And the, and the thirty-two that are enumerated seem to me to be very minor issues. Bottom line, I don't see a crime wave in this community and I don't see the need for another uh. Part-time officer, let, let alone a full-time officer when the, when, because I'm in a community that is. Thank thankfully for all this who live here, an extremely safe environment where most people don't lock their houses. Very few people lock their cars and there are very few prime incidents that I'm aware of, even. In the summer months when the populations roll in, there are more and more people here. So I. Uh, don't see any justification for adding either a part-time or a full-time officer. Thank you.
All right. Name and address, please.
Mark Stullis, six, six, seven, Chris Alana. Um, I hate to disagree with that guy, but you know. The many, many, many years. We had four officers, chief and three officers. We made a heck of a lot less taxes than. Now we have two officers and a chief. We pay more taxes and I don't believe we're getting the coverage we should be getting. Um, our guys are doing a phenomenal job. But they're also spread out. We don't have. Round the clock. Our summers are getting busier and busier and busier. The speeders coming in and out of town on M twenty-two are absolutely ridiculous. We can use that extra office. I think it would be money, dirt, all that. Thank you.
Any other public input? Thank you. Uh, moving to correspondence.
We have one item of correspondence by John and Mary Armstrong. The letter is Ellender Tackett. Um, the letter is addressed with the placement of the bathroom facility in the front of their home, but in their yard fence and their decent.
And I am meeting with Mary Armstrong tomorrow. To the older, uh, as they address in their letter about seeing what it's gonna look like. So. Just wanted to be clear. Um, approval of this.
Uh, the only question I had after minutes, I, there was just a couple of grammatical corrections I'm playing, even Chris. And in the final copy, it was, it's telling me, just occurred to my.
Yeah, I found just one.
So nothing substance. I would be, who has amended?
Second, the regular and the special.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Or not?
Yes.
Send your static.
Hey, approval of Bill.
Yeah, okay. We'll make a motion to approve prepaid vouchers five, seven, three, five, two, five, seven, three, seven, two. H R eight, nine, five, six, eight, nine, eight, two, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty cents. Which ten thousand, eight, thirty-five, thirty-four, capital, payroll voucher. Four, two, two, sixty-three through four, two, three, six, nine, and E F T, seven, seven, five, seven, eight, eight. Amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, seventy cents, which. Ninety-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, ninety-one cents for wages. Twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, eighty-one cents for employee retirement benefits. Three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and nine cents for employee deductions. Twenty thousand, five, sixty-five, thirty-four for federal tax deposits. Forty-three thousand, three hundred and one dollars, fifty-five cents for murders.
Any questions on the days? I had some that they were answered, watching. Uh, roll call, please.
Olson.
Yes.
Stratten, Chargers.
Yes.
Or not?
Yes. And monthly bills? Uh, I'll approve vouchers, five, seven, three, seven, three, through five, seven, four, three, four, two, two. In the amount of a hundred and ten thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Trend, yes, Chargers.
Yes.
Or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Council members, reports, uh, and. Here in, all family. I got. I was. At D D A. So I'll report with that. Um. Let's see. We mentioned that Mr. Pinto will be uh, the representative. For the Planning Commission on the D D A Board. Well. We talked about the corridor improvement. There really were no updates. Josh gave us uh, our finance report of how much the D D A has. Talked about the strategic plan update, uh. Our director from the chamber has been working very hard and helping us out with that. Uh. We discussed again that East Moon Corridor. Uh, we need further discussions on ball setting. Is planned for the main meeting. Uh, we uh. Talked about the marketing and social. Uh, we authorized a thousand dollars to go toward the Frank, Frankford Club's marketing. Marketing, uh. Lessons Nugent uh set up a domain. Or purchased a donate purchase for the Frankfort Downtown. Frankfortdowntown.com for ten years at the cost of a hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That'll help the public to know what's going down. And uh, she also reported that she has created a new tube to channel for the city. The Chamber, uh. Uh. And Frankford has, and Alberta's visitor's guide. I think uh, you're getting ready to do a map also for the city or have, have done it. There's also, if you haven't seen it, uh, there was an ad was placed in the Shore, Shoreline Magazine. That will run May through October. Uh. There's a video out there. If you haven't seen it, it's awesome. It's uh, put out by the third post. Uh, video. Really, really a great. Uh, it's about a three-minute clip. Uh. Community events, uh. There's still like, plans in the process for Restaurant Week ends up back to bricks. Uh. Car show that's coming the first. Friday, Saturday, Saturday in June, two hundred and fifty classic cars will be coming. Uh. Uh, the members discuss the use of a D D A camera. For regarding local businesses and adding their logo to the view. Uh. The Chamber. Uh. Is having a presence at the farmer's market, which is a very good thing. Uh, Frankfort won the Tournament of Towns. Contract, contest through K L. T radio and they are going to do a live morning show. Here, somewhere in town. With local politicians and business owners uh interviewed that broad, broadcast. Uh. Josh reported uh, his experience of going to Boulder, Colorado and kind of comparing. With Frankford. Uh. We did have a discussion uh, about the social district and it is on our agenda with an amended. Uh. Layout for where it's gonna be. Uh, and uh. Mrs. Nugent is also going to take the lead for uh, Ironman to have something going on downtown while. Uh. While between the swim and the bikes. Because there's just nothing going on down in the downtown area. So she's taking the lead on that. And also, it was discussed about the. Port City Smokehouse, which is also on our agenda to win. A client C beer wine license. Uh. We had discussion about sidewalk uses in siege with the. Uh, sidewalk cafes and merchandise and we're going to be looking at that in the Planning and Hub Committee also. Uh. That was pretty much it for. D D A housing. I did not attend. Uh. Fire advisory. We haven't had any additional. Well, what we have. Was the Fourth of July parade that we handled over in January, Friday. So that's pretty much Ed's report. To you, Dale.
Yeah, uh, I don't have a lot of history. Uh, month, uh, the personnel committee did not meet. Uh, the finance committee was current effective, but I'll let the mayor uh. Uh, report on that. One who sued did not meet. Planning Commission did not meet, but there ain't one now. In May. May, fall, May sixth, something like that. But the Planning Commission is meeting. Uh, last month we met in Blula and uh, his name's uh. Pulling it along there, okay? Love, we hope to uh, have our reconstruction meeting on our new uh, work that's gonna be starting maybe. Couple of weeks. Still, at least we're now tracking on starting to do construction sometime in May or. Uh, the engineer and contractor anticipated that to be roughly a twelve-month process. And the Marina Authority did not meet, so that's what I have.
Yes, finance did meet. We worked on the fire department, fire and first responders budget, major and local streets. Uh, and Brick Center, we did that. On April third. Uh, there was discussion about the Cross Blue Shield, uh. Uh. Insurance as well as dental, vision and. Insurance as well as dental vision and. That is pretty much what we can send. Then um. The eleventh, we discussed the B S and A software proposal, which is also on the agenda. That we will be budgeting into uh the next fiscal year for the next fiscal year. And we. Discussed on the Bramblefield. Uh, budget, recreation park. Budget, the D D A. And uh. The bond. Uh, for the water improvements. Pretty much all of our bond accounts, we've covered those. And then on the ninth, we did have our finance meeting. Prior to that, and we, which are at back of Christmas report. Of all type of revenues that we um. Had to do. Um, we are going out for garbage and garbage bid. And we can't really complete that budget till um. Know what we're going to, what's the results of this. So that was pretty much finance, Grant Committee did not meet. Tree Board met, but I was unable to attend, but I do know that they're going to be working with the. The uh school, the kids are coming in. What were those days? To work then. Um, so may set up and they're gonna spread out um amongst the trees uh. What's that stuff? So. That's where they're in their busy planting trees. So it's pretty much it for me, pretty.
Okay, let's see. Uh, record, we met the seventh. Um, of this month. Topics included, uh, I guess, uh, Marjorie. Her last name is James. Pierce Oliver, yeah, um, she is interested in continuing uh. Swimming lessons for young children, specifically Frankfurt Elementary School children. Uh, at Seven Street Beach. Um, she is free of charge. So she's just looking for support from the city, Josh, did we look into the insurance aspect?
We've been somewhat supporting this for several years and we've included their volunteers under our liability plus. So I think we'll finish the truth.
Okay, so. So that'll be taking place at Seven Street um. Another uh topic of Seven Street Beach would be uh. The beach has been kind of re-done as of this week, it looks great um. They went in and they removed all that. Like grass, the ugly grass that is uncomfortable and. You know, it's just overtaking the beach, they removed that, they put down uh like a weed barrier and then brought in fresh sand. So we have a nice fresh clean beach down there now. So that's a bonus, uh, what else? That's, there was not a whole lot that we talked about, we had a small group. Uh, we barely had a quorum for that meeting and it was quick. So, uh Airport Authority, not a lot going on at the airport at the moment um. There is an upgrade to one of the hangars that has about like twelve meters on it. It's costing the airport. Whatever the meter fee is per each meter and we're gonna consolidate those all down into one, which is gonna be a huge savings for the airport. Um, I assume with, you know, the warm weather coming, we're gonna start seeing more and more activity out there. Which mean more fuel sales, uh, more people coming in paying landing fees, that type of thing, so. But so far, everything's good out here. That's all I have.
The only thing I was gonna add to your parking rights is uh that they asked for first first aid kit.
Yes, they did ask for first aid kit. Oh, and one other thing about parking right, the dog park is looking for somebody to donate a. Like a rubber made tub, like a outdoor. Like you would find, and you can add your deck or whatever where uh dock place to be stored it. So if anybody knows anybody that has a big tow line around. If the dog house. But uh, you know, something like that to, so people when they, at the end of the day, when they take the dogs out of there, they have somewhere to. You know, put the toys that they bring, a lot of people bring toys, maybe. Uh, just uh, you know, a thought, if anybody has something like that, feel free to drop it off at the doctor. Or down here at City Hall or talk to Josh myself. Okay, so long.
You have time later, okay. Our commissioner is here, but she did send an awesome report. She's very awesome, very detailed, I appreciate it. Okay, department heads. And it just hitting highlights because we have such a long agenda.
My, my jet, my report is online, uh, on about Friday. Just wanna know, um, congratulations Nate Curry, uh, on the eleventh for his work in the research years. As well as Chief Cedar Home, as we'll be on um many states. Alright, so um. Any questions?
Did anybody have any questions?
I want uh to recognize Chris, the chief cats as well as uh. Chief Cedar Home, um, helping Chris with letter from the young number student. Well, that was pretty cool to send them information on the history of Frankfurt. And uh some of the fun facts and maps, send them off at least. Police patch and fire patch, I know that that made that 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 kid's day, thank you for doing that.
I hope he gets an A plus.
Any questions to Chris, but thank you for bringing that up. And excellent, we did really well on collecting taxes. Sorry, very good, first. Josh.
Uh, we are doing hydrant question of the water distribution system this week, we started last night. Uh, we're doing between the hours of six P M and eleven P M. Just be mindful, that's not a good time to do lights, just like the high on on the water. Um, things are coming out pretty clear, which is good, uh, testament to our annual question that we. Um, we did lose some some pressure on the north end of town, a lot of beach and bridge that. We're gonna do a little more digging on on wire. It's it's normal to lose pressure, but we lost significant pressure, so we don't know if we have a thou blows or something going on, but. That project's going well, will be done uh sometime Thursday. We're doing the lower pressure district. First. You know, we have an upper pressure, a lower pressure, doesn't really mean there's difference of pressure, just. Upper pressure sped off an elevated tank. And the lower pressure sped off the clown tape. The lower pressure district is oh, two thirds of the city and the upper pressures in the west quadrant. Represent that area, we'll do the upper pressure district. Going well, hydrants too well, uh, we'll have. Our expansion of the town housing district will have that here on the eighth twentieth before council meeting, we have four o'clock.
Eight twenty, there's twenty.
Uh, well, yeah, we do it at the same time we have.
I'm sorry. That's eight in the time. May twenty, I P M. And then easily following will be. Um, space that.
Oh, oh, okay, got it.
One last thing, uh, before we move on, we did have a really good update from Corps of Engineers, uh, yeah, Rogers for the Great Water.
I thought, I was thinking that's on the twenty first. Is that when we'll be at four o'clock then? We'll need two different public carers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that one will be at four on the twentieth?
Yeah.
Don't forget that.
No, I'm clearly confused.
Right, so May. On the May twentieth, that's at four P M, four P M. I would refer into to the um.
One on the twenty first of April.
Yeah, there is a public caring. April twenty first?
That's for a dangerous building issue we're dealing with.
Yeah, and then there will be a council meeting. So I thought that was my area, I had twenty one and my twenty.
That's. Okay.
Very water, real quick, uh. They're proposing steel sheet wall structure from shore to elbow, which will allow the fishing activity to continue without problems. It'll allow uh. Even though no condone jumping off of here. Uh, it will change the reptile effect a little bit because water won't pass through. Uh, the section from the elbow to the light will be rubble mound, which feels similar to what it is now. The total elevation will be increased anywhere from a foot and a half to two foot, they have finalized that. Funding appropriated, what they say about twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven?
And then step wider.
Yeah, yeah, wider. Twenty two feet at the main section of the main control box to let out. Um, and real quick with the lighthouse, we've been able to to raise the date for our progress of a little over a hundred and seven thousand dollars. I think last year this time, we were just below fifty thousand, so.
That's right.
Any questions? Uh, their corps recommendations.
Yeah.
I can forge what they did for their presentation.
Right, so the group.
Yeah, it's just very preliminary right now, we're not gonna do a community engineering until. Next summer and they've gotta come out and validate uh some of the informations, soil warnings and that, so it's generally very.
If this attached to my reports, you might be able to just download it too.
Okay, great, if you didn't get a chance to review, you're right.
Any other questions for Josh? Let's see, let's see, let's see. Uh, when, when are your summer help?
I'm negotiating with them right now. In the demands.
Okay.
Which I I said their their compensation would be addressed by the city council.
Okay. Chief of Queens.
Running through a line, uh, was our second busiest. We had so far this year, they paid into calls for service. I attended the week long, March tenth through fourteen, new chiefs school. Uh, but I'm by the Michigan Associated Chiefs and youths. Showed a lot of topics, it's a lot of uh. Fun information to try to. From them, I have some really. Uh, really good contacts or chiefs, one in northern Michigan that I can bounce ideas off. I was actually one chief at a magnacity, at least today, helping me walk through some. Some state reporting issues that I was having. So that that's proved helpful, uh, the radio encryption project is in its final stages, all of our radios are. Are in, the old radios are in, they're in program. The portable radios are back from Texas. And again, those just need to be touched. Same place for you. And uh. Once that's done, we'll get our portable radios back. One radio that. Is good, has been reprogrammed. So that's done, this early project goes. And uh the other three will be done as soon as, as soon as they're reprogrammed. And they're ready to install, they want to be touched again now. And then the. The oldest power, the two thousand sixteen. Finish this, the app and the new stickers are on, it's up front and going on.
Okay. Um, and now are these the same radios that you are getting through, they're coming to, or are those in into your ship?
Yeah, essentially the same.
Okay. Okay, got it. Any other questions for Mark? Okay, fire chief, Mike.
Uh, question on my report, I actually had twenty C M S runs on that, we had well. Uh, we actually had a total of nine. And eleven in the angels, so five A M S runs, one fire. That's kind of where we're at here. Give you option of numbers. Information on the. You having any questions?
You can do a couple more minutes.
Some of the uh, some of the things are gonna give you heads up on working, I know, right now. That's kind of place outside working yard, and the ladder truck needs to have a wiring. Be done or something with wiring because the other controls are not working, variously done and bypassed. So I need another batteries. Other battery. When I have it worked. So you've got a bunch of Terry on. Uh, yes, it's all for you, maids. Oh, and that's uh. It's time or no. Uh, it's kind of working on, I'm meeting with Anna Valine next week. Uh, my summertime safety presentation with her, I just finished my PowerPoint presentation. Got Kate. On the ninth of May, so I'll be doing my presentation with them on Sunday. Uh, the PowerPoint presentation is uh. Their kindergarten is understanding that they don't. Or done. Uh, community risk reduction, uh, weather preparedness, like I wanted that all, storms, we got Kate on that and we're getting who knows. What's, so we got some time, I'll add. Other questions? When we get to halftime, talk about the happy notes. We always gotta have that, so. You you can start to experience the rapid spring and all this uh weather swings. Uh, it's kind of humbling to see this group volunteers, they're not get called up no matter how snowy rainy. Nasty it is outside, you show up for all hours, the whole lot. And. There they are, just another one of the plus, it's something a matter team that just comes out in the middle of the night and never is needed. I'm gonna punch up and show off. One other thing I can add here, um, for happy note, just think we met with station five open red, Graceland Fruit and Worcester Plant. And uh. The total of us, we had uh thirteen people from Frankfurt, uh, the members that showed up. They had eight members, we walked to the bridge plant and uh. They got, they got seventy seven thousand gallon system in the ground, all there, they gave us uh. Got permission from the manager, basically used to draft on the waiting time for any stuff from the area. Which I S O does not know, maybe you're not. And uh, also, uh, we talked about the. Uh, some of these evacuation plans, they got holding gauge planned evacuation and L C plan that's in place, so. If they got a big lot out, probably gonna shut it down, shut that down, create a gas connect here. Just to do a quick fire report on a building for a hundred thousand square foot, that's when it's gonna take sixty six thousand gallons of water. I gather. Just now, I fired Jesus. Good, I'm returning.
Okay. Alright. Um. All business, I'm going to opt. To uh. Not pay all of it, I'm going to see how uh item J. So I'm not believing that, anyway. So let's go right on to neutralize those. Dylan Quinn Potter on sewer bills. Chris?
So every year.
Year.
Sure, every year this has to do with the city ordinance, or I'm sorry municipal code. Um, which deals with any water bills that are over ninety days as of April first. Um, this year we started out with thirteen, Jen has sent letters and made contact with, and we've collected nearly half. So that's great news. Um, a public notice was put in the paper for uh April twenty-first and the thirtieth. Um, so I'm asking for the city council to please allow me for those individuals who do not pay. That water bill amount as of that are due ninety days overdue as of April first to be able to. And then authorize me to put a public notice in the paper for those two dates. But Jen did a great job, she's collected half. So.
A whole lot less than what it used to.
She does a great job.
So I'll make a motion to approve the authorization of. Of the city. Sewer. Charges that are unpaid for three months as of April first twenty twenty-five and remain unpaid. As of April thirtieth. Twenty twenty-five to the summer. Twenty twenty-five tax roll per collection and authorize the publication of a notice in the record page. Advertising all property owners of such action.
I'll second.
Any discussions? Roll call.
Corella.
No, here, yes, sorry.
Chargers.
Yes.
Coordo.
You'll make it.
You gave me a sign, so I'm happy. Coordo.
Yes.
Olson.
Yeah.
Stratton.
Okay, um. Creation of retirement discos or cash for funds free. City Hall Fund Refinance Finals, um. It's really a cleanup process.
Yes, unfortunately, um, we tried to do our best this, when we draw levy taxes, to only take our revenues and our expenditures. If there's an increase or a decrease, it affects that, so this year we're looking at. An excess of three thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars. By creating this reserve account, that amount goes into the reserve, into the cash, so it's not in cash, and then allows me to. Again, figure what it would be, and be able to move that money over. Thus decreasing the millage, the millage amount to offset that. So it just makes it really clean for the auditors, and God forbid if I got hit by bus. It would be easy to track. It's not just here. Or that. So it just makes it easier.
What establishment of a prior fiscal year reserve for fund three oh five for funds collected using access fees in the following fiscal year.
A second.
Do I get it?
Roll call.
So we're going to go charters?
Yes.
Coordo.
Yes.
Olson.
Yeah.
Stratton. Corella.
Yes.
Okay, I don't see.
Attending agenda, pertinent information, Wolverine fireworks, display incorporated. The guardian number quotes for the July fireworks, as well as the marine special event application permit. The same date work in previous years, including uh United States Army Corps of Engineers Special Events Permit, which was added last year. Uh, and Wolverine fireworks is handling the postcard.
How are they, okay. Then I see, they have the exact location on servant day of this check. North here, standing.
I make the motion to authorize city superintendent Joshua Mills to sign the applications. Patients verifying this legislative action. For the annual Fourth of July fireworks, as well as the US Corps of Engineers, uh, special event permit, and marine special event. Application permit.
We'll make a discussion. Roll call.
Olson.
Yes.
Stratton. Corella.
Yes.
Charters.
Yes.
Coordo.
Yes. Who's Ray? You say it's when they're dreaming.
Well, I don't know how many years ago it was, uh.
At least, yeah, right.
The move to the last one, it's supposed to be the short term situation. The the location was prior to that. Hmm, so again, the catch was a two-year recycling subsidy agreement that kept down the power, this is the record, and it's easier. Utilize a portion of their revenue, probably that's all called park view. Uh, or recycle things.
Been a long time coming. We did it. So.
The uh, the uh, lease has been.
Yeah, sorry.
The the lease has been.
No, this was uh. Through the county.
Okay, okay, so.
Through the county, because this is a county program.
Yep, yep.
So uh. And uh, Mr. Rainier has seen it and agreed to it, so that's why he was on there to his side.
Our staff will be plowing around, just so you know.
That's the only thing that the city is obligated. Uh, the county is putting it on their insurance and so on and so forth, so.
Do you have a date of the move?
Um, tentatively, we're looking into May, possibly. But we'll put word out there. So that you all know. When it's going to get moved. So. We need to help things to.
I'll make a motion uh to authorize Mayor. Uh, where to sign a two-year recycling uh site. Um. Please, uh. Agreement between the. Yeah, between Benzie County. Oh, yeah, I say, I was saying, least not pleased. I I know I'm going crazy already, so uh, the city of Frankfurt and Richard Rainier utilizing a portion of Mr. Rainier's property located on four oh four Parkview Lane. Frankfurt for the recycling bins. Um, uh, he says, so, so where, this is just for residential recycling, this has nothing to do with business recycling. Well, I am just asking, I don't know if we asked that question before, okay. So I thought.
Public would break down their box. Wouldn't have to have them empty so frequently.
Okay.
Sometimes I feel like I want to stand there and break them down.
I know, I know.
Anyway, any other discussion? Roll call.
Stratton.
Yes.
Corella.
Yes.
Charters.
No.
Coordo.
Yes.
Olson.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Donation acceptance policy. Since we've had, uh. A glitch and. Uh, donations, we had to, need to put this in place because uh. One incident in particular, uh, individual had. And it'd already been given, you know, their tax receipt for the donation and still on the sort of. So it's quite a lengthy policy, but something we really. To make sure that doesn't happen. So and and Mr. Um. Mister, uh. Ross has reviewed this.
Yep.
And he has approved. The policy.
The one thing he made sure to note on there, um, that was very important. Is that donations made to the city and related records are subject to the Freedom of Information Act. Unless the donor makes the steps to remain anonymous, so that is something that he added that I. From what I originally presented, which was great.
As I understand it, kind of reading through this, it doesn't mean that someone couldn't necessarily get the donation back.
Alright, thanks.
It's just, it just sets some guidelines on the conditions that will accept. Or a donation, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the donation acceptance policy that we sent.
A second.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Charters.
Yes.
Coordo.
Yes.
Olson. Stratton. Corella.
Yes.
Okay, Mike. Resolution to join M A B A S. Which is, uh. Mutual, yeah, Michigan Mutual Eight Box Alarm System Association. Question number one is, um. Is anybody else in the county?
Uh, yes, you've got uh Myron, and then Thompson, Bill's now part of Mavis, uh, thirty-seven oh one. You've got Little North County, Ranch Terrace County, John Gass, Bay Antrim, a single, simple, I think. And Westwood and Ross Comber, a charter thirty-seven oh one.
So how is this going to help your department?
Well, basically, if we have a major catastrophe, it's not. Sample of, if I need multiple resources. Doing. Uh, to an incident, we're in a situation where we just don't have enough to run an operational period. Um, you're talking to get twenty-one people. A structured fire under N F P A seventeen oh one requires a minimum of at least. Twenty-eight people, we don't have. So, and if it went for, let's say the hospital, the Naples, when, you know, even the department, non-flexes. These are major incidents, we have one ladder, I could get a string of ladder. Uh, being part of Mavis also gives me. Access to without charge, with charge to use, which is urban search and rescue. Um, and of course, one, on the mission, they'll come up here to do. Um, search class buildings and everything, and handle that, they also have a hazardous. Danger hazardous materials event, they'll come up here free of charge and can mitigate that for us, and on technicians. And uh, level three of the. What we can, and it's no charge, there's no charge to join Mavis. There's no charge or responsibility, we can drop off any kind of thing at the agreement. Um, it's basically an added Band-Aid. If we have a major disaster, what does it require of us? If we, if we can help, if there's a call for a mutual aid box alarm. And there's, there's a required for, or ask for help, we can attend if we have resources, if we do not, for example. They say we need a water tanker, although no, and if we only have, so we're not going to let it leave here, and it'll stay put. Instead of tapping out the entire fire station to go to to any major event. It will specify, a box alarm says, for example, and it doesn't also impede upon local mutual aid agreements. There's no, this is a broader net. So yeah, for example, Benzonia needs a. Has a fire, their box alarm card would say, okay, we call Frankfurt in, Frankfurt would automatically bring waters. For rescue and portable hydrant, that's all they need. They don't have to be, they have the station, they already have a couple fire trucks. So that would be a, a one box cover. If they need more resources, then they would probably go to the next station, and then they would ask for those additional sources, so nobody's wiped out.
So if, I'm understanding, so you need this, obviously, to, it's a broader scope. In this, if that situation happened now, or any of that situ, your examples I give you now, have uh happened. What would you do with, without, or what are you doing, what would you do in this current situation if you don't have this? Like, you know what I'm saying, like, like, well, if if it, the, the, one of the scenarios you said happened, what do you, would you do now? What will you have to do? Right.
The same guy, two people on staff, instead of sending out an alarm, box launch, there are people, say, who can help.
And there's no cost to the city for this, huh?
I think it was downside.
Yeah, I don't either.
So. Then on page five. Are you going to be like a plan coordinator and develop this application? Were we a part of this, I mean, what's the next step for you?
Well. Basically, we, we, uh, our next step is to take this resolution to the clerk, for stamping, proves it, and I take it, there's already division, this. This is, the checklist that you've got, is when we started an entirely new division.
Okay, that's where I got so confused, I thought maybe.
We are joining thirty-seven oh one, which is. And, and unless. For some reason. Manistee County, which is. Going Mavis themselves. They create their own division, and then they vote, and see if I'd like to join there.
I, I thought you were having to, to develop a division, that's where my.
Ed Parker, who's retired veteran fire chief, uh, he's now actively involved in the Mavis. Uh, Deming, as a matter of fact, was the chief of the Gator, we talked about that, and, um, whatever.
Yeah.
But when that tornado hit, he was like. What do I do? And they called a special council meeting immediately that day and joined the Mavis, they had. Multiple vehicles heading up I seventy-five. Ladder trucks, personnel, everybody within minutes, they northbound. Uh, I don't know. We're back again. No?
I, I can add to what you, what you said.
So anyways, that pretty much what they, they did is they had resource heading north on, seven five. So I immediately helped.
Okay, now it's much clearer to me. I just thought this was going to really involve you. In getting all of this set up, but. I also found the. Error, if you will, on the resolution. Uh, the third, whereas. Says article in hand. Uh, and sign, and sign. I looked uh, on the information that you gave me, and it should be article ruminal. The one one, which is. So that needs to be correct, this is. Okay, I'm quite smart. Important, I guess. About this, so I will make a motion. To approve the proposed resolution zero four, is that a dash or? One five.
That one, yeah.
That one five of twenty twenty-five, supporting the Frankfurt City Fire Department. And joining the Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System. Any other questions? It wasn't difficult, furnish us with enough information for us, for us. Roll call.
Corella.
Yes.
Coordo.
Yes.
Olson.
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty twenty-five, twenty. Twenty-six Blue Cross Blue Shield. Reapproval, shall we take a little recess?
Maybe.
Because we need to acknowledge. We'll take a. Five minute recess.
It is very dry, I know.
There was a. Gee, I'll tell her recess. Body break for everybody.
My bad, they all have to look at and stay there, seeing these wilders. Huge success.
Oh, for solid.
Medical sessions. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six Blue Cross Blue Shield break approval. First, some of them letting go of this because you thought you'd be patient.
And to discuss the rates, the medical rates are go, are increasing thirteen point nine six percent. Um, all other insurances for the city went up ten this year. Um, due to our H R A, the fact that we have the H R A component, um, that helped us quite a bit in, um. Being, being able to decrease that amount of what the increase was, according for current employees and retirees. There's three that are still on, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield. They did order an increase for the H R A of six thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. Um, which was a sixteen percent increase, and that's a four-year average of usage. Um, so it kinds of, kind of gives us an anticipation of what we need to save and. In my experience with them, they've either been spot on or a little below, so I like that they're very conservative with their numbers.
Down almost ten thousand from previous years.
Yes. Yes, we used to. At that seven, um, please note that the employees are still paying twenty percent of their premiums, um, so. Employees, depending on their age and of themselves and their dependents. Um, so out of their weekly paycheck, you're looking at twenty three thirty to a hundred and twenty three forty, forty eight. Dollars a week are coming out of the city employees to, to help with their insurance. Um, AccuSure is still gonna continue to do our H R A, um, component. So that's where the city pays the portion of the employees deductibles. Um, they're the subsidiary that handles that due to HIPAA. Um, they send a register to us saying they're gonna pay X amount of bills. We approve them. Um, and then the claims go through as well as the reimbursement for retirees that get two hundred dollars up to. Two hundred dollars for their, um, retirement after sixty five, over sixty five for their insurance. Um, their cost has not changed in the fifteen years with them. Uh, it's twenty two forty five per month for employee and four fifty per retiree. Um, so in fifteen years, they've never increased their rates, which is pretty awesome. Um, Delta Dental did increase by three point four percent. That equated to six hundred and forty one dollars. Um, and increase vision and life insurance, short-term disability. Um, and employee life insurance and retiree life insurance, that remain the same. Those are locked in until July of twenty twenty six. Um, please note that there's two, um, motions on this, um, agenda item. One is to stay with our current plan and stay seamless with our current plan. The next is. Basically, uh. Opting out of the provision of local government saying that you would like the employees per their union contract or their contracts and union contracts. To contribute twenty percent of their costs. Of their health insurance. Yep, so there's two of them there for, for you to, uh. Yes. Does anybody have any questions?
So, I'll make a motion to maintain the employee's healthcare plan of Blue Cross Blue Shield. See, see, C B P P L C R A Gold Five Thousand Plan. With reimbursement back to their current seamless plan. One second. Any questions?
And just one side note, they had quoted me in the very beginning when I said, can I get a ballpark? We're working on, on budgets. They said seventeen. So I was thrilled when it came in at another fourteen.
Yeah.
So. Sorry, wanted to add that.
Roll call, I'm the first.
Olson?
Yeah.
Stratton? Corolla?
Yes.
Charters?
Yes.
Hoerta?
So I'll make a motion to exercise the act out provision, which allows. The local unit of government, the city of Frankford, to determine on their own cost. Employees will contribute for healthcare insurance for the twenty twenty five, twenty. Six year plan year, the employees will be required to make twenty percent contribution. To their Blue Cross Blue Shield revenue cost in the city up south of P A one fifty two regarding H R A costs.
Second.
Any questions, discussions? Roll call.
Stratton? Corolla?
Yes.
Charters?
Yes.
Hoerta?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yeah.
Okay. Change of liquor, liquor control, Park City Smokehouse. That?
Coursey Smokehouse LLC located at one thousand Main Street, is seeking a class C liquor license from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. To serve beer and wine on the property. They currently do have a, a beer and wine license for takeout parks, so they're asking for a license to be able to, uh, consume. Uh, they did receive support from the D D A Tuesday, April second. Or the final approval comes from the city council.
Any questions?
Is it just beer and wine? I can't remember. I thought it was all of it. Liquor, beer, and wine, no? Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is. Is that what I understand? So that's needs to be. Serve liquor beer, okay.
Somebody wanna make a motion to us?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to adopt. Uh, resolution of support for Coursey Smokehouse LLC. To produce a, or to procure a class C liquor license from the state of Michigan Liquor Control Agency.
Questions? Roll call.
Charters?
Yes.
Corolla?
Obscene.
Hoerta?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Stratton?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a couple of those.
Good calls.
Okay, just. Back to you on the, about our B S and A. Software upgrade, I, I said, can I, on the video about this? So, I'll let you take it.
Net since two thousand nineteen. Before that, we use pervasive for, um. Their software through B S and A that handles all of our, um, accounts payable, payroll, it's all of our modules. They are going to a cloud-based version, um, which was a very positive experience instead of going just into accounts payable. When you're granted access into it, it's all through, um, a webpage and there's multi. They call it the multi, um, authentication process. Um, you're able to go in and I can build my own. Screen for what I do the most of. So perhaps Jennifer is more for utility billing. Hers would have utility billing and, and some information about the marina or in cash receiving, and she can prioritize. For it to load, do the update, it updates automatically, um. So there's, there's lots of pluses. It will be a little bit of a learning curve because, as it always is, um, but. My past experience with B S and A has been very positive, um, as far as support. The first time we did this in twenty twenty one, I believe. The cost was around seventy thousand. It was very pricey. We had in-house for a week and a half, someone here, um. This time, it's all going to, the staff, we all agreed that we can learn over, you know, um, over the internet, doing some. Webinars and such, um. The process is rather lengthy, um. It'll start, it's a six-month. Um. Process from when we approved. That's why we're looking at it now. This would be budgeted in next year's budget. Uh, the cost is a one-time fee of twenty seven thousand one hundred dollars. And then the unlimited support did go up from, uh, increased quite a bit. Um, however, they're also keeping a backup of our, they back up every thirty minutes. And they host it now, so it's not on our server. It's gonna free up that server, um. So that is definitely a benefit there. Um, I've just became aware that, um. Crystal Lake Township and the Village of Alberta have agreed to take on, um, the cloud. They're doing it. Um, and I believe locally, Benzie County just had something where they were, um, interested in doing in a, um. A, uh, presentation on the cloud as well.
This is kind of off the subject, but, uh, we have Eclipse for. Have you had any problems of dropping or? Uh, like the other company we had, we had a lot of problems with that. How has Eclipse been?
I've had a problem.
Not a problem, okay. This is totally off.
Yep, not a problem.
But it's all internal stuff.
So basically, we're thinking of general, of divvying it out, cause all the different funds actually. Contribute to our programs in different spots, so I broke it out, but we were projected. Um, this is part of the, uh, general fund budget that's gonna be reviewed on, on our next budget council meeting or our budget workshop. So. October, November, um, date of implementation, implementation. Yes, thank you. Um, we would need, because of that window, is why it's presented to you now prior to the fiscal year coming.
Well, and plus you didn't want to go live and call after the audit, correct?
Yes, our first experience was in, in two, two thousand nineteen, as we actually did it. July first. That's our beginning of our fiscal year, and it was a nightmare.
Yeah.
And, um, after the audit, after that's done, October, November is a cool-off, you know, a good cool-off time where we, things kind of. Come down a little bit, um, before the election in November. October is a great time for that. Um, and then that gives us a full month, month and a half to be able to work out any quirks before we have to do W twos and ten ninety nines.
And this is gonna be proposed in the budget for next year.
Correct.
Yes.
And we won't be billed until next year.
And we won't, that's why.
But it's time to get it.
Right, no, that's, that's why, that's why I.
So initially, the cost with everything is going to be the forty thousand three eighty. Twenty one of that is, or twenty seven of that is going for the, is the winter fee.
And are we confident that this is, will make, I mean, is this gonna make the budget? Like, meaning like, have we already earmarked this and?
We're working on that, yeah.
For all the other, we've already looked at all the other, all of these funds that are noted here.
Yeah.
With the exception of general fund, we've already looked at all of them there.
Okay.
And we've already proposed budgets for all of those.
Yeah, okay.
So yes, they banned all the others.
The balance, yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, so.
I'll make a motion to approve. The, uh, B S and A upgrade from dot net to the cloud version at a total of. Forty thousand three eighty, which will be spread amongst the general, major street, local, street, fire, D D A, water, sewer. Two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six, fiscal budget year.
It, when, and is this a one-time, and then this is, that's it, and we remove it from the budget the following year, or is it, we just get? The only, there's gonna be that one return.
Great question. So that thirteen is gonna remain next year for our support cost.
That's all.
But that's, but that's all, and that can be distributed amongst all these other, of all of those again, so it's like thirteen hundred dollars per.
And is that, and is that subject to increases every year, or does that, is that a, like?
In the past, looking at their past track record, they keep consistent with their amounts for that, and that's unlimited tech support. So, and that's, and they usually call back within thirty minutes. Pretty awesome, um.
Okay.
And as a side note, this, um, dot net that we have is slowly gonna be migrating out. They're no longer gonna be supporting it.
Correct.
So they'll be going to the cloud slowly.
So then we're gonna be obsolete.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Hoerta?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Stratton? Corolla?
Yes.
Charters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I will J, Frankford Police Department. Anything of what you have already put in here or?
There has been, uh, since starting this discussion with the treasurer. Uh, there has been a change in that, that number of twenty three thousand. And Chris can explain that better, but it's my understanding now it's around the fifteen thousand.
Difference?
Difference.
Yeah, first is the twenty three.
With some other adjustments to the. To the budget, which is still under construction.
Yeah.
And what we found out is the biggest change is because we were having to put in. Lots of money into the MERS for, uh.
Chief Lasowski.
For Chief Lasowski, because he was in that quote. Was something like ninety three thousand a year.
It was huge. Last year it was, yes.
Yeah, something like that, so, uh. Uh, any new hire would go into the other division that. Uh, the other officers or all of you are in right now, correct?
Correct.
Do we have an actual number?
For what?
This is fifteen thousand, is that the exact number?
It's gonna be between thirteen and fifteen. It all depends on what happens at the Vance Committee meeting.
Okay. I have some questions, um, covered the cost essentially, like that. This number no longer was still, that includes insurance, that, this, retirement, et cetera, perhaps.
Correct.
Okay, um. What is gonna be like the added fuel cost? Do we know what the current fuel cost is per month that?
I don't know. Do we have a picture cars?
No.
No, we wouldn't have another car for that.
Right, but another, another officer, another shift means.
Yeah, I got you. I was just curious.
Another, you know.
The proposed budget that we are submitting, um, we raised it by sixteen percent, so that was another thousand dollars. Cause he's right on par right now.
All right, so. Um, you know, I wanna look at some of the data, so we hear the word data all the time. Data is kind of what drives. The world, hey, I mean, when you get on social media, it's data-driven and algorithms are based on. Data that's been collected on you, and you get on Amazon and purchase something, data there that knows that you're gonna click and buy this. So, I wanna know some of the data from Mark as far as. You know, the need for this office. So, Mark, could you just define a call for service for us, for us that are not law enforcement?
For what, for what purposes I use here? Is any number either generated by an officer for an activity that's generated by that? By that officer, or dispatched complaint from dispatch? So either one of those constitutes what we call a call for service.
Okay. Um. So how many of those calls are priority ones, priority twos, priority threes?
Domestic violences, motor vehicle crashes.
I'm asking one, what, what? We, what the stats are for our city, not. What the, what one, two and three mean.
Yeah, I don't understand what you're asking.
I'm asking of the calls that you feel. What number of those calls are priority one? Number of those called are priority two? Where those called are priority three? When Mike lists. These calls typically are. You know, detailed as this is a major call, this is a minor call, et cetera.
And we don't prioritize them like that, but it's a. Anything like a suicide or anything in having to do with a, a medical event that law enforcement is required to. Respond to would be priority one. Uh, domestic violence, priority one, and a fight in progress. A driving complaint. Dependence, like a reckless driver, you could call that a, I guess a two. On a scale of one to three.
Okay, so my question to you is. How many of those calls is this department fielding? Do you have numbers?
If you subtract the, the minor ones that I put in the report, I don't feel it's. In the best. Reporting to report how many suicides we go to, how many? Dead bodies we go to, how many domestic violence calls we go to. If that's any information that the council wants, I can definitely.
I think it is.
I can account for every single thing that we do.
Absolutely, because I think it's imperative that we know. You know, what the, what these calls are, what the level each call is. Now, how often is another officer needed on a call?
I certainly can do that.
How are the calls going though? Uh, what are your clearance base call? What's the average time for clearance rate?
Yeah, how much time we spend on a call?
Yeah, how quickly does it get cleared? What's?
Just depends on, on what type of calling. I think, I think Brady, I mean, okay, I interject, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think that's an interesting point that he makes because I kind of didn't really dawn me until. Like I look at the availability and like we always say, hey, well, well, we don't have a full coverage, right? I think we, you know, we didn't know that there's missing coverage, right? And I've always heard, you know, even prior to me joining the, the council that. Oh, we need another officer during the summer and part-time, right? But I think Brady makes a really interesting point is. What, what's the particular need? When it pertains to like those pri, those calls, right? If we're just. You know, catching people jaywalking versus, or you know, going to a priority one call, how many of those? And is that part of the need, I guess is the best way of saying it.
I think that's.
You know, because I don't see, that's a good point you raised because I don't see that in here. Is that part of the need? Is it part of the need because? We have so many of those or is it just based on the fact that we don't have coverage or the operational efficiency and that kind of stuff? So I think it's a part of it.
It's, it's the whole, sure, pie. Each, each piece is a piece of the pie that creates the whole thing.
Sure.
And part of that is something you just cannot quantify and that's, um, things that are prevent, prime prevention. You can't, you can't count the number of things that don't happen.
That's a, yeah, but that's a.
That's a big part of it.
That's a throw it at the wall theory. I mean. We need, we need database. You know, if you could give us data to tell us. You know, what is the average length of an investigation? How many hours of downtime do you have? What is the average response time from our officers? What is the average response time from the county and the state police? What are the peak times for service?
So, I want to add a little bit to that, so. And not that, you know, Chief Katz, I'm sure can provide some. Yeah, historically we've tracked, but a lot of that data we have not tracked.
But that, that has got to be available. Freedom of information.
Well, there may be, there may be a report through his report writing system that he can. Wean some of that information out, but.
Well, I think it would be fair to share that with us so we know.
Let me, let's ask him, can, can, is there a way of getting that data so that we can review it or not?
It'd be time consuming, Billy. It could be. So it could be generated.
But I think one thing that you have to take into consideration, it's not. Just that traffic stop or the going to. Potential suicide, you know? There's probably a longer span of time that is involved. And. One versus the other, and I know that the guys have to go to court, you know, there's times.
Well, and then those are the, the things I want to know is, you know, how much time is spent doing each of these activities? How much time is special in public relations? Do we know that, like? Okay. How many active investigations do we currently? How many, and what's the rate that you close those at?
The, the rate those are closed, it probably isn't very good. Because the guys don't have a lot of time.
Well, okay, but.
When they're, we just have one guy working all the time. And that, that's not a complaint. That's the. The beast that we have.
We're with monthly report here from last month. If you do the math on that, that's one point, one or calls per day, that's if you. How many is the county fielding?
A lot more than that.
Okay, so I guess that brings the question, is there the need if we're only fielding one point, one or calls a day?
I think that's, this is just my opinion. I think that's just somewhat short sighted because again. You have the whole element of deterrent. And besides just responding to calls, I mean, how many? How many events are negated by simply somebody seeing a, a police guy sitting there? Uh, or.
That's not a relative theory though.
It is, it absolutely is. That's all a part of, uh, police enforcement. And part of that is, is issuing tickets, some of it's.
So I guess I want to.
Some of it's just deter.
So like public relations, how much time do these guys spend, you know, can, can we collaborate on that? In public relations, I mean, you go to the football game and you chit chat with, um, you know. Public there or you spend twenty minutes in the gas station talking to your people and get a feel. You know? I guess, you know, I'm going to ask Ed a question here. If it's, this might be kind of similar, then. When you hire people, or a bad question. When you order food or you add or subtract things from your menu? How do you decide that stuff? How do you decide the need? Based it probably off of what sells and what doesn't?
Yeah, it's called a product mix report. So tells you, tells you what sells, what doesn't, you, you know, what costs too much, what doesn't cost too much, uh, you know, what your. Stars are, what your dogs are. Yeah. So I mean, that's, that's how I decide on what I put on my menus, but. I think that certainly, I think what your point is, is data driven, right? And I, I'm. I'm starting to see that and that's why I kind of thought that that was a very good. Question was where the outside of the, because I see this as training, experience, community relations, availability, career development. I get that. Um, I, I'm just curious because I think Brady has a good point. Where, what's the data behind it? Because we're in a data world, like. Uh, I didn't know that the average call, average call per day is one point four. That seems pretty low. You know?
And what time of year is it?
Well, that's my question. I don't know.
Thanks.
That's what we want to know. Like what is, is that now or is that?
He's basing that on my reports, which have been done for the last three to four months.
Right.
Which is our quietest time of the year.
Sure. So what's the, then I'd like to know what the rate is per in the summer.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, I'm, so we don't have that though?
Well.
Brady has record.
Yes, we would have to go into the, uh. Into the database that he, that they used to or, or, or still logging their, uh, their calls and. And suck the information.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm with you. I, I do think like. Because, all right, let me start that question over. So there's always been, like I said, since I've. Been involved, there's always said we need a, a part-time officer in the summer because summer is very. Crazy. I get it. Totally understand it, right?
Sure.
Right? And then.
And that's why I moved the.
Yeah, right. Sure, I get it.
At the same time.
Correct, yeah. And so. I guess if we're willing, if everyone was willing to do a part-time officer. And, and, but, or felt the need with the part-time because of the summertime. Where now in the, in the full-time officer year round? How is that justifying? Like I want, how is that going to be utilized? If we've been talking about part-time and then we're like, okay. Full-time, you can't, you can't find some people because it's availability. I get it, right? But to Brady's point. Okay, so you have all this data that we don't really know about yet. And I, I'm, he made, he makes some valid points on it. That's why I'm asking about it. So I think I've always been a data-driven person. To make a decision, right? If I'm, you know, especially with my staffing, I say, okay, hey, I, I need X amount of servers and so on to, to serve this amount of people. Right? Because I have, based on like. What is that here though? Like what's, and then what's that compared to any other town that's this small? I think is another question we need to have too is. We're how many twelve hundred people-ish roughly, you know?
That's, that's, that's skewed.
That's another thing.
But I get it, I get it, right? Twelve hundred in the winter, but in the summer. Okay, again, data.
So we follow, that's what I'm saying. So if we follow that data, that should give us an idea of. What hours are, you know, there should be a method with this. And I know other, uh, agencies have this because I spent time.
Saying we don't have, I'm just saying that. He's going to have to dig it out of the files and it would have been nice if he wanted some of that information. Present that so we could have that information as part of that.
We just, so, but didn't we just learn about this like two days, two days ago?
No, no, no.
About the full timer?
It's the same, the same thing would have been, uh, for a part-time. So let me, let me give you, I guess, another stat, okay? Hundred and sixty-eight hours a week, right? Right now we have three officers. Three officers at forty hours a week. That's a hundred and twenty, that's a hundred and twenty hours. Our police chief probably spends at least fifty percent of his, his time administratively, I would say. Between all the reports, okay? Now, let's factor in vacation times, PTO, sick times, training. And, uh, time away for court, so on and so forth. So suddenly we're almost down to the, to a factor of probably. Closer to two officers or one point, seven five officers. Mark identified during the interview process, one of his. Uh, initiatives because of the shorthandness that we needed to add police resources.
So why is that? That's great data, but. Why are we only emphasizing on that data and not the other?
I think you need to consider everything in aggregate.
Okay.
Everything together. I mean, certainly.
I'm just saying, we, again. The, the process, right? We just, I, we, we've had this part-timer. It's, but is a part-time been, a part-time have been in the budget? So we didn't even have the part-timer in the budget. We're discussing that.
And add out, man, we're going to be in the next fiscal year anyway. But I want to point out one thing. The previous. Leadership in that department. The officers did not go to any training, am I correct? They're way very behind on that.
Yes.
And that is something that Mark's trying to correct.
A whole. That's absolutely fair, but again. I just, you know.
So what's your challenge with this? Is it the cost? What is?
I think it's. But every, I think it's a little. And it's not really a challenge. I'm, I'm, all I'm saying is, uh, and all I'm personally saying, like I said. I, and initially I was like, yeah, okay, we have some shortages. We need some help in the summer. I get it. Totally understand, but then it went from that to full-time and then I, I was trying to process and I, I've got all the. You know, you know, it's all right, it's okay. I processed and now I was like, yeah, okay, that make, that's makes sense. But then I'm hearing Brady and I'm going, wait a minute, that's right, wait. Why we have, why don't we have more? All I'm saying is can like, we get more data to understand, hey, what? You know, how many calls we're on, how, what other, um.
What nature those call?
Yeah, the priorities and also what other towns have the same size, they have the same amount. That's all, that's all I'm asking is. That's all I'm asking was just that. There's that. It's not that I'm against it. I'm just asking if there's more data, that's all.
Here's what I'm hearing. You want more data before you will make a decision.
I, I think so. I think it's fair.
Is anybody willing to move forward to have a part-time person?
I, I don't think that's the answer. I, I don't think that's, I don't think we can hire a person because availability. If, if, if there was availability of hiring a part-time person, I would like to go that route, but. Well, did you read the report, Brady? Did you read the report? Okay.
Okay. But so here's what I'm going to suggest because we need to give Mark time.
That's right.
To come up with this data. And once he receives the data. We will have a special meeting just on that issue.
Again, I, I do, I think it's fair. I, absolutely. I just, I just want, I just, it's not, it's not, I'm against any of what's happening.
The last time.
I'm not.
I would like to just. You know, make a decision, but there's a couple of. People that are against it, or three people are against it, or three people are against it. Then they're against it.
But again, we, we talk about process and we're just kind of like. All right, we went from part-time, okay, full-time go. It's like, okay, so like, like, come on, I mean, come on, you know that that's true. I mean. We, we went from part-time, like I was talking about part-time, we've been talking about part, all of a sudden, three days, we got, we were going to a full-timer. And then we have to make a decision without data.
Here again.
That's just a little bit. Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm happy to hear it. Again, I'm open. I'm a, the, one of the open discussion kind of guys. I, I, you know.
I guess here, the part-time versus the full. So when I went to this school downstate, I got a chance to speak to several chiefs that used to have. Part-timers on their force. One was the city of Mackinac, Mackinac City. Historically had a bike patrol. That was, that run by part-timers. And every summer they would hire part-timers that just got out of police academies. They needed a job, someplace to go. For the past three or four years, that chief has not been able to, to get part-timers. The attendance at police academies right now is at an all-time low and I think that's nationwide. And, uh. So he ended up converting those part-time positions into full-time because he just couldn't fill any. The same was true with the city of Harbor Springs. Real, real same pop, pretty much the same population as we have here. They have quite a few more officers than we do, but their budget's also considerably higher.
Harbor Springs is, I believe is quite a bit more than our population.
No, it's the same.
Twelve hundred people?
Yes. So with that, I. Did some inquiries about our, our, uh, police academy in Traverse City. Out of all the attendees, which I'm, I'm not sure the number of attendees there, only one is not spoken for. So because. It's been too hard for agencies to fill vacancies, they're sponsoring cadets through the academies. So they're. Basically taking them on as an employee, putting them through the academy. And with, as long as they graduate, then they, they get a job with that agency. There's only one. One person who's technically a free agent and every agency in Northern Michigan is trying to get that person. Leland County has four openings. The last I talked to Sheriff Borkovich up there. And he gets a lot of applications, but there are applicants from out of state, there, um. All kinds of different jobs, but they are asking, hey, can you put me through the, this, this academy? And. They don't get a lot of laterals, which would be some officer with experience coming from another agency to their agency because they won't offer. A, a higher pay rate other than starting. So with that, knowing the, the likelihood of us finding somebody to work part-time. Is slim to none unless you find a unicorn, kind of like someone that was in the same position I was last. Retired, looking for something to do. Um, benefits weren't a big deal. The chances of finding somebody like that are slim. And the, the likelihood is higher. And, and. A liability possible. So crunching the numbers with our treasurer, when we find out the, the difference in the, the budget. Because of the, the changes with the last chief leaving was so small. That in order to. That in order to. To fill that position. Make it a full time position so we can attract somebody. You know, we're not paying starting wage with no benefits, which is thirty hours a week, which is what the part timer will be. We can offer to get a a full time position, which also satisfies the contract that the officers have. There's a clause in the officers' union contract that the. For minimal staffing, and that is three officers and a chief. So there.
Sure, it does say.
There is.
If the city can.
Yeah, as long as it can be afforded, well, I think we're showing that the city can afford that. It's not an increase to taxpayers, they're paying the same amount of taxes. They're just not getting. Basically, what I consider to be. The full benefit of those tax moves. Fifty hours a week with no coverage. In my opinion, is not acceptable when you wanna have, the charter says you need a police force.
And I don't think that there's any. Discussion or for me at least, question about the need. So to speak in the how from a hour standpoint, I I just, you know, I've been. And well, I I'm a short timer in the sense that I've only lived here permanently for four years and, you know. It's it's pretty, you know, it's pretty quiet around here, and and I get somewhere is different, totally different. But I I like I said, I'm I'm just, I'm a data guy and I thought, I thought, I think Brady brings a good point to the table about data. Um and I feel more comfortable reviewing that. So that I can make a good decision, because I think I don't wanna rush to judgment, that's all.
Yeah, that's all. If we can have some some data that backs up that, yes, we need. You know, here's the the peak, you know, there's, we should be able to look at this, and I know. Other agencies can do this where they've looked at it, they go, okay. At this time on Friday between seven and ten, we need to have two guys in zone A. Or we need to have two guys in zone B. You know, et cetera. So I guess what I'm thinking is, you know. Show us the data that says like, okay, you know, these are the times when, you know, there is more. Action and there's more need for law enforcement, these are the times where it's a law, I mean, obviously in the winter. We're looking at more deer in town than human beings for the most part, so. You know, I just, I wanna see. I wanna see some data that backs up this, you know, the the need for another officer. I totally can see the need in the summertime, you know, to have a part time officer. But, you know, we go back ten years. Years with what, two officers for the last ten years? Have we seen uh an increase in crime? Have we seen a decrease as it's been straight?
I know I am, or at least. My opinion for what is wrong with it. A lot of in those last ten years, the county has covered us.
Well, and.
A lot more than.
Our our tax dollars paid for the county. To be. Coming over here as well.
Not as much as what we had today.
Well, I will say.
Mark, do you think things were recorded properly in the past and you're gonna give an accurate? Description of things that have been happening?
Possibly.
You won't know yet until you get into it, I think.
Um, I mean, I don't know what kind of reports you got from the previous chief. If if that kinda. Information is available to me. Restored the last ten years and that's morale. The morale of the officers, so that will.
That was the next question, have you discussed this with your? Your officers on how they feel about having? Another officer on staff?
Yes, they're they're more than more than happy about, I'm sure, have the potential for it.
Sure.
The. The amount of holes that were in the schedule before not being filled with overtime. I I cannot in good conscience. Do that, so that's another expense. With an added. Full time person or even part time person to cover in the summertime, which. Yeah, I explained the reasons why that, I don't think, I won't say it's an impossibility, but it's an impromptu. And. So there won't be as much of a need for for overtime to backfill. So is the concern is, we call burnout. Guys that you're trying to get them to to work overtime when someone's on vacation to fill. As much time as you can, you can only ask the guys to do that so much, you can't do that every single time. So I know in the past. When, you know. Right now, on a normal week, we have fifty hours that nobody's working. With one person on vacation, say, just for a week. That just bumped up tonight.
Hmm.
So that's more time that we we just expect the county or the state police to come in and.
And go.
But, and that's. I don't believe a premium that the city. Somebody show up within a couple minutes because they're inside a square month. Not coming from Lake Anne. Or Thompsonville. Or if the two guys that are working in the county are tied up and we have to wait for a trooper to come from Mesa.
Well, and again, that's why I asked, you know. What is the average? Response time if somebody is not here, you know, that the the this is. For or that county officer, maybe the county officer is already here.
Maybe, yeah.
I mean, they are in town on basically a everyday basis. Um, I, you know, I just wanna know. So. And what I would like to do is table this until, you know, we have. A better understanding of the data and, you know, what it's gonna, you know, here's our downtimes, here's our uptimes. You know, here's how we should schedule these officers the best to get the the most mileage out of them. For, you know, and if there should be that we look at the data and it should tell us, okay, these are the times. This is the seasons. These are the hours where we need to have, maybe we need to have, you know, this guy on or. You know, maybe we, you know, Sunday morning. We don't have anybody, and we have this guy out later in the day because, you know. It seems like all this should be available.
And this isn't, this isn't a one time purchase either.
Yeah, but a lot of those decisions are to the chief, I mean, I don't think we necessarily wanna get into the weeds of trying to schedule the officers.
That's what I'm asking, schedule the officers, but.
So it may be the data, I don't know, maybe the data will show that we need.
Okay, here's.
Absolutely. I think we should rush to.
Um, how long do you think it would take you to come up with that data? Week, two weeks?
Two maybe.
Cause I don't wanna postpone this to the next meeting. So would you be able? Do you think in two weeks be able to? Come up with this requested data?
Twenty ninth. I can see what I'd come up with.
Uh, so we're at.
Twenty nine.
The twenty nine?
Yeah, that's two weeks from today.
I'm just looking at my calendar. Um. Yeah. If you can get it. Together for the twenty ninth, we'll schedule a special meeting to handle just this. Okay?
So there, is there a motion on the table to table this to the special meeting in May, on April?
I'll support that.
Eh on April twenty ninth?
And are we going to include part timer, which I think that's a.
I think.
Part time, full time, how's that?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Okay, so.
I don't think we're gonna find a resource for it.
I don't think we want part time, but we got only out there.
Is there a time that we can put on this so then we're all on the same page and I don't have to call everybody?
A little better.
For the working people, I would think.
Five fifteen, five fifteen?
Yeah, on the twenty nine.
Okay. So the motion is to table this agenda item. On to a special meeting, April twenty ninth at five fifteen.
Correct. And a decision will be made one way or the other, all right? Cause we've been kicking this hand for two months now. All right? Uh, did somebody say that?
Yep, I did, I seconded, so we're good, I just need. Olsen?
Yes.
Stratton?
Yes.
Charters?
No.
Corolla?
Yes.
Florida.
I don't want to, but yes.
So that those lists of questions that you want? Can you formulate those and give those to?
Absolutely, yes.
Look at that?
Yes.
Instead of at the last second, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right. Prior fiscal year transfer for MTT county charge backs.
Do you want me to run with it?
Please.
Okay, so we've been talking about the MTT that we had a tribunal settlement, we've been talking about it the last couple. Months whenever we've talked about chargebacks, well, in our final payout from Benzy County, which thank you Kelly Long. She is wonderful, she gets our payments in. Our payments distribute, excuse me, distributed back to us very quickly, um she deducted the eight thousand seven ninety five thirty eight that we had discussed. That was from prior fiscal year. That's why we have the prior fiscal year reserves, so I am asking if we could. Prior year fiscal to to offset that revenue line for our taxes.
Came out of this year's.
Correct, well, it came out of this year's taxes for the city, they deducted it out of that bucket for our taxes.
Prior.
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of eight thousand seven hundred ninety five dollars and thirty eight cents. From prior fiscal year reserve to the city hall tax revenue line to offset the decrease in the line due to. County charge backs and allow associate associated budget amendments.
Second.
Any questions?
Florida.
Yes.
Olsen.
Yeah.
Okay, social district. Thank you for taking my Alba. Appreciate that. Wow. I uh this looks a sense of mine. Um.
In the parks.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the establishment of a social district in downtown Frankford. With a resolution to designate a social. Social district in common areas in downtown Frankford for the consideration by the Michigan River Control Commission. Was it public input?
Yeah, public input.
Did someone second or no?
Nobody.
No.
Okay. I'll second, I have a question, just a point of clarification, I I think this may have been asked already. The reason why the district doesn't go to the park because they already, you can. Drink at the park currently, is that right? Yes, okay, I just wanna just clarify, thank you.
What? What park?
Well, right, is it a Mineral Springs Park?
Yeah, I I don't know about Mineral Springs.
Well. Yeah, is that, that's all, that was my question, like, my question was because it stops at the park. Is it because? You can already.
It's already allowed.
It's already allowed. Yeah, yeah, that's that's what I mean, what park were you?
All of them? All the way down?
All of them.
Okay.
So ready, that's what that was my question. Is that your, is that the understatement? Yeah, but you see, right.
So we can go down there and have big old parties while you're having a carnival with all the kids around and do all that.
I mean, that's that's currently how, that's what I was asking you, that's currently how it felt.
That's what I was concerned.
Yeah.
I mean, there's certain times of the year where there's.
Oh, I.
Children's events.
But I I I had a feeling that I think that's why I asked, I just wanted to clarify that that was it, because I had, I knew that.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, okay.
That's my bad.
Yeah, yeah. Hmm, all right. That was my only question.
I don't think that's a good situation for me, so. But as far as the district goes, I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Charters?
Yes.
Florida?
Yes.
Olsen? Stratton? Corolla?
Upstate.
Thank you, sir.
Hmm.
Thank you. Now, public plans.
Peter Penfret, one of the mission, you know. Um. I think the council was very short sighted, making a decision on the social district. Especially when they're wavering on adding an additional officer. If we're running pretty able to pull the walk up and down, um. The length of Main Street drinking. Um, we already have. Um, it's gonna cause more calls for officer cats or chief cats to deal with. Um, our sidewalks are not wide enough. In this town that they do to want to. Add more congestion to during the summer. Um, you're lucky to walk by an ice cream shop and and not getting angered because someone thinks you cut in front of them. Um, I do think in regards to an additional officer, I do believe one is needed, I'm not sure. I have not heard what the actual cost was for that, and I think. Data is important, but I also think, and I think that can contribute to this. There's a, Ed probably needs a minimum amount of people to open a restaurant, not knowing if one person's gonna walk through the door or twenty like day per. And that's the same way as the police department, um. I think there is a big need to make sure we have minimum coverage, especially if an officer needs to take a vacation there. Uh, and then again, the social district works. Eh to me, we're just adding. Um. A a chance for a lot more disturbing calls. Um, arguments on the street. And I and I don't think the city of Frankford is prepared for that at this time, thank you.
Other public input?
Hi, uh, please, Brody, since twenty one Michigan Avenue. And uh, this is regarding the uh officer we hired, and I was just wondering, you know, sometimes. It's depending what the data shows. It could be possible to maybe, you know, what's needed is somebody who's on call as a health or drug abuse professional in the hospital. You know, and have, you know, a corroborate. Uh, the way. You make a way for a police officer, you could have, you could use some of the other resources that are already in the community. Try and support them. To support people who are drug abuse crisis or domestic violence crisis. Sometimes it's more useful to have a amount of help product from a police officer in those situations.
Thank you.
Mark, Mark Stewart, six six seven, Sullivan. I've been in this town for forty two years, I was a business owner on Main Street for twenty five. For quite a few of those twenty five years, we had three officers and a police chief. It was very nice to be able to see officers walking on Main Street. To have an officer available when you called him, not have to wait for officers. That, that's only part of it, you've got times when. Officers had to be called at the school and you got somebody from the county faster than you can get somebody from the city. In a crisis time. That officer, that fourth officer is a critical part. We need it, and I hope you guys pay attention and consider that, especially as Peter said with the. Um, so to social district and stuff, if you don't have police present, you're gonna have a problem.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Any other public input? Oh, I'll give that to you, Vicky.
No, she can go.
Okay.
Vicky Stewart, so fix that on personal admin. Um, speaking to Brady and we do think.
Um, speaking to Brady, and we do think taxes can help. But working at the school for all those years, when I needed somebody. I don't think people would know about violence, parents can be. And how violent students can be these days. And I was the one at the elementary the last sixteen years that had a call with police. And when I couldn't get an officer, a local officer, I just waited and waited. Outside trying to get a county officer to get there because they have a, the whole county to take care of. They had some turnkeys with the jail. Instead to help when we had violent students. It's great that we pay taxes, but we need people that are available to us. And as to speaking of the schools, if we live on twenty-two, this is a real issue with us. And lived on twenty-two, we have unbelievable traffic in the summertime. They just fly by, why we haven't had some terrible accidents is beyond me. Because they hit the top of the hill coming from town and they just blow down the cook the lake. And we've had deer, many deer hit, and those could be kids, we've had kids on that. I don't know, answer me this, if we write some tickets, where does the revenue from the tickets go? Doesn't that go towards the police?
Very small amount.
Very small amount?
Yeah.
But you know, your presence, maybe we wouldn't have the problems with the graffiti on the lighthouse. If we had a presence at nighttime, you know, if kids know that we're gonna have somebody. Around and adults on the weekend, even. Just on the weekends, we need to take all that into consideration. You know, we're putting a lot of money in different places, but I think that. Safety is why we have the police department in Frankford.
Thank you, please chief bringing the uh support for different mass bus, whatever this, we were gonna make this, sorry. Um. Thank you very much for doing that, um, you were not here when my. Building downtown, we had a fire in the back and thank God it was during the winter and nothing got out, because the entire south, north side was. Free block probably wouldn't be there because we didn't have, um, the mountain in the fire. So we were much, and I gave the support, you never know what's gonna happen, like, you don't know what's gonna happen, this emergency and. What happened up in Tuskegee area with all the trees and that and stuff, it could, we prayed it'd stop. That goes to the police, um, I'm very much in favor of having a one more full-time police person. I'm not sure if we need an additional part-time person in the summer, but. We pay tax money for police safety as well as fire safety. As well as water, all of the things that we do, that's the highest thing. We just approved and the city council just approved, I think, and I'm not sure Christine, so don't get mad at me. But I think what I heard, and I haven't gone through in detail all the packets, so I'm sorry. That we approved a move to a cloud front accounting system for an upfront fee for next year, which is a lot of money. And then thirteen thousand dollars a year extra for an additional cloud system for every year for our accounting system. And we're questioning thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars additional to our budget, which is what I heard today. To have a full-time police person here, doesn't make sense to me. As a taxpayer here, I want police, fire, utilities. Business development, all of that type of thing, restaurant develop, all of that type of thing. Christine, I'm really sorry, it's not that I don't like accounting and don't mind. It doesn't make logical sense to me. Um, we sent a lot of money. Heads in the bathroom, bathrooms, we've been talking about bathrooms, right? Y'all know my opinions, we've been here a long time, I think it's really, really, really unfortunate that we're putting it in front of. The houses at the end of Miami, I think it's outrageous that the city council will have a clue for it to go there. When, um. Cannon Heart is the place that it should go. And know it's a dead horse probably, but it's really, really, really unfortunate. How we sat through many, many meetings, we paid an outside consultant, I'm not sure exactly how much we paid her, she's a lovely woman. But we paid her a lot of money, nobody wants it under the, they want it in front of her. Not nobody, but several. Um, last, I'm just gonna say.
Quickly.
Quickly, so Christine.
Yes, ma'am.
You have sent out our wire bills, now we get. Us that we are collecting email addresses for every meter in the city of Frankford.
As long as, that's why we sent those out, we're hoping people respond.
I'm hoping that they do too, but that's one way of collecting everybody's email list, it's a taxpayer here with a meter. That we can proactive communication about agendas, about meeting notes, about all these things. And I will put something together and present, uh, talk to the mayor or whomever I need to talk to about coming and presenting. How we can do that in an effective manner, because that's transparency. And we have always had in the past that we can do it, if we don't have email addresses. If we're paying our delivery, we can give you an email address that he uses across for other purposes.
Okay, really short, we can walk us everyone I need as well, so it's key, that's the purpose. Uh, I would like also really consider how much time they look to prevent it. Cause like we have seen him reference this before, so much more. Because people are flying by and people like to see this more. Because of the kids, so thank you.
Any other comment? Thank you.
And it's not only to add up the patterns, how many parts can you, it's time he tries to prevent this.
True.
Any other public input? Thank you for coming and getting through all of this request.
To have a motion?
Yeah, seconds.
Who's second?
Do it there.
Okay, Brady?
Roll call.
Corwada?
Yeah.
Olsen? Stratton? Charters?
Yes.
Corolla?
You. Thank you.
Yes.